Posted on the east wall of this meeting room. Tonight's agenda was posted in three public locations. The Eagle Municipal Building, Eagle Fire and Rescue, and Eagle Municipal Park. The Village Board will now stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Those in the audience that would like to participate, please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is sanctified. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a reminder to the public, if you wish to speak on an agenda item tonight, you must first raise your hand and be recognized by the Chair. Upon being recognized, please state your name and address. On all agenda items except for open forum, each member of the public wishing to speak on a topic will be allowed to speak one time each for a period of up to three minutes. Speakers should direct comments to the Board, not the audience. Speakers shall not disrupt the proceedings of the public body nor speak out of turn. That brings us to item number one. Report from Law and Justice.
If anybody has any questions on the report, I can sure pass it along to the Sheriff's Office.
All right. That takes us to item number two. Report from Building and Zoning Administrator. All right. Thank you. That takes us to item number three. Open Forum. Open forums for discussion regarding items not found on the agenda and that do not require the spending of taxpayer dollars. Is there anybody present that would like to speak during open forum?
Brought my recycle up on Saturday, and the irrigated cardboard was full of noise. There were an awful lot of boxes in there. We're not knocked down. And of course, that means it fills up faster if you don't knock down people. I don't know how anybody got anything in there on Sunday or even did. The other item that I'd like is, and this is aimed at maybe at next year on recycling, can we work with the Cass County, keep Cass County beautiful, and see if we can get anything done with electronics and/or tires? Even if it's not in our town. So we work with them, you know, to have a location that people can pick.
Yeah, they had a couple electronic ones this year, but Eagle didn't make the list. I think they had one in Blatt Smith and one in Eagle Water maybe. Yeah, I think.
Just put an operator. It's a good thing to be doing, try to clean your town up a little bit. Helps the residents.
Cass County does have a tire recycling. It's about every four years we have to dig the dripping water in the county yard. It's too expensive to have small sites, so that's the reason I do it at the county road department. Everything's 17. How many of those, I think I've met everybody. Open ones or legislative lists, just picking the some kind of these as part of the list. So the King for less than, it's pretty bright, I'm not going to force it this summer. It got dark again Monday. So I'll be back at least after we get to the end of the year. I think I need to know when. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Anyone else? All right. That takes us to item number four. Update on the new fire and rescue station facility.
Good evening, guys. Yeah, we're almost there. Point of these are 99% here on these. So I asked Nick if we could put it on you guys. I know we sent them over to you, I believe. Am I right?
Yep.
I just need to get the yea or nay that this is kind of what we're going with right here. Because I need to get a final ballot. Everybody has the changes done. That's kind of, you know what I mean? We're at 99%, so I guess that's what I'm trying to ask for here, guys.
You just got them to us, like within what, the last day?
Well, I got them 75% and that's the change going.
I know.
And that was two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
I don't know, has everybody had enough time to look at these tonight?
The only thing to do, the sign, and I sent the sign over. I don't necessarily need that. I just need to know on the prints of the building. That's around that.
The other issue that I need the Board to yea or nay tonight is the administrative subdivision, plat, the suggested border boundary for the fire station, because we cannot go forward until USDA releases that property. And we haven't been able to do that until we have the survey. And USDA is closed right now. And so I would like to get it okayed so we can get it sent in and hopefully have them act as soon as possible. But as soon as possible, they said they didn't think it would happen within 30 days. That would be the fastest if we did get it into them. But they weren't sure because none of them had gone through the process before. So, did everybody get a copy of that in the last 24 hours? I guess I'd like to have some discussion or some approval on that.
The Law Division, actually, I never had to tell you this, Maureen. They did talk about that at the last meeting.
And so that, so what you see on paper looks good to you right now? Okay.
Me and I like it, but don't have a choice. It's kind of what has to unfortunately work. So to make it work is where the line kind of has to be.
I just want to get the party.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, like I said, we don't like it, but that's the only way to make it work.
The goal is ignorance.
Yeah. You know, it just kind of has to. I got one question. Where, I didn't see on there where the interceptor was going to be.
It's right in the front, in the driveway.
So in the driveway?
In the driveway, in the parking station.
Oh, in, okay.
Yeah, well, right outside the parking station.
Yep, right in front of it.
And it shows it on there. Yep, yeah. So I had to put that in. So that catches everything, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We moved a lot of utilities around just to get it cheaper cost. The way it came in, be downstairs, a generator. They had it way oversized. Maybe they'll be.
You can't have permission to put the roads down.
What can you hear for what power? We have 600 amp made coming in. The generator is going to be 100 KW. Then we're running the whole fire station.
Yeah, we're paying the town.
It already, the original man, like 200 KW. And oh my guys, this is way, I'm like, stop, dude, guys are spending. And so that dropped the cost probably about 55 to 60,000, just on that. So, yeah, well, yeah, it runs on natural gas. So guys, I've been trying to value engineer everything I can get out of this and make her run shorter of anything, because they need to run copper one way and back the other. So shorter distance, stuff like that. So, yeah, it's been, put a lot of hours in just trying to get to this point. And we're there to the point where I just need to get the architect going, okay, yeah, we're good with this design. He doesn't really care about the sign. I just need, because that way I need to get mechanical engineer and those kinds of stuff. So that's.
Yeah, and the sign is probably going to have to have Department of Roads approval.
Well, I think what we're putting this sign is actually kind of something to stay, because it's going in between the village and kind of the office.
It is, but it's within so many feet of the state right away. They have, they have a certain corridor they have to approve on those frontages. We've run into that with Casey. Any sign that's along.
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, I guess we'll have to dig into it.
Yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to ask them permission.
Yeah, I didn't know that was even close to the state right away. So that'd be between the village office and the fire station.
Oh, it's on this side? The drawing I saw was actually the other side.
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
Well, that's one of them. I saw another one that looked like it was on the other side of it. So maybe we're.
I think he's always wanted it.
Okay. That's fine then.
Yeah, and those are two examples that they kind of had, those signs. I just don't know what you guys really want to go with and what we want to put on it. You know what I mean? So if anybody's getting an idea, just send them over to me.
We don't want it, we don't want it to say for.
No. Those are two they have sitting there. I, we'd really like to incorporate the bell.
Yeah.
That's out here. Put the bell on there, and then we'd have a light pole going up right there, tall light pole. And then they'll get electrical up there, so get one of the Christmas lights or whatever. That's the part I need to get drawn into, the print. Other than that, the sign part, I'm not really worried about. And then we talked about doing a tripwire or whatever, the cell brick. If someone wanted to put a name on a brick or something like that, to try to pay for something, it's something like that. So it can be part of the community. So that's kind of where on that, guys. Anything questions on anything? I mean.
On your bathrooms, I'm seeing that is two stalls is what it is?
Yes.
Okay, is that enough?
Well, so for, for the fire station part, yes. You're going to have a bunch of public stuff there, which we're really talking about. We work really unless we're going to have a public meeting there. Yeah, I mean, that starts occupancy, it needs to cover everything.
Okay.
I didn't want to get too, John, I totally understand. I kind of look, do we want to put three in? Do we want to do this? But at the end of the day, you start just driving up the cost of this for something that's probably not going to get used. The one, did you see there's one upstairs? The reason why that was added was it was going to be cheaper since the piping was all there anyway. But down the road, in 30 years, if we ever, ever have to go to like a full-time EMS or something, that hole upstairs can get turned into dorm rooms, stuff like that. So that's why I had to put that bathroom up there. That's the whole rhyme and reason. It was cheaper to do it with a plumbing company.
And at what point do we need the recycling containers to be moved? I mean, we got to clear an area to move them to in the first place.
Yeah, so, John, we're probably looking at February. I'd like to see those.
Okay. But that's snow, so we want to try to get to there before, before that.
Totally understand. That's about the only thing that's going to get the fence. That can stay up for the time being with instructions going up. We probably wouldn't have to take that down until the end of summer next year. Would be the whole goal. And then we take that down, roll it up, and then keep, you know what I mean? The fence, whatever, you guys can use it. I doubt you want to keep that gate up. We just have to take a look. So, so, yeah. And then the rock, I know we want to salvage some of that rock so we can relay it on some. The other part, we'll just use to build up the back road and then the white rock. I've been going back and forth, and the Soil Report come back. They, they gave me three options. I had one company just check out the one option. Rhyme and reason, I thought we were really good for what we have to do for it. So that made me feel really good. That made me a little nervous at what we're going to have to do there. And I think we're looking really good on that point, so. So, yeah.
So what do we need to?
I think he's looking for us to approve the 99% drawings.
Yeah, if you can approve, yes. That's what I'm just looking at.
All right. I will make a motion that we approve the 99% drawings, so we can move forward.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the 99% drawings for the new fire and rescue station facility. Voting on that. John?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, I just want to thank you guys, making the report.
We want to thank you too, Luke. You've put a lot of work into this, and we appreciate it.
I've taken on a job like every 10 years. And about 11 years ago, before we moved out here, I was a big part of building a new church in Lincoln. So try by 10 years and do something for the community and get back to us in a way. Something, I think you guys do a great job. And some days, it's unrecognized, you know, and I totally understand. Never going to make everybody happy. And it never happens, and it just doesn't. They, by far, you guys do a good job, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
Feel free, call me anytime, guys. If there's any questions, we can make some microchips. I just need to make sure. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item number five. Resolution 2025-11. Adopt the Lower Platte South NRD Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Motion to enter this resolution 2025-11.
I'll second.
All right. Nick?
Voting on the motion second to introduce resolution 2511. Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Resolution number 2025-11. Whereas the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 was signed into law on October 30th, 2000, placing new emphasis on state and local mitigation planning for natural hazards, requiring committees to adopt a hazard mitigation action plan to be eligible for pre-disaster and post-disaster federal funding for mitigation purposes. And whereas a hazard mitigation plan was prepared by the Lower Platte South Natural Resource District and assistance, with assistance from JEO Consulting Group Incorporated of Lincoln, Nebraska. And whereas the purpose of the mitigation plan was to lessen the effects of disasters by increasing the disaster resistance of the region and participating jurisdictions located within the planning boundary by identifying the hazards that affect the Village of Eagle and prioritize mitigation strategies to reduce potential loss of life and property damage for those hazards. Finish up? Whereas FEMA regulations require documentation that the plan has been formally adopted by the governing body of the Village of Eagle in the form of a resolution and further requesting approval of the plan at the federal level. And now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Eagle Board Trustees of the Village of Eagle, Nebraska, does hereby adopt the most recent and FEMA-approved version of the Lower Platte South NRD Hazard Mitigation Plan update in its entirety. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2025-11?
Second.
Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to adopt resolution 2511. Voting. Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Resolution 2025-12. Signing of Year End Certificate of City Street Superintendent 2025. Can I get a motion to introduce resolution 2025-12?
So moved.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Voting on the motion second to introduce resolution 2512. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-12. Signing of the Year End Certificate, Certification of Street, of City Street Superintendent 2025. Whereas the State and Nebraska Statute Section 39-2302 and 39-2511 through 39-2515 details the requirements that must be met in order for a municipality to qualify for an annual incentive payment. And whereas the State and Nebraska Department of Transportation requires that each incorporated municipality must annually certify by December 31st of each year the appointment of the city street superintendent to the NDOT using the Year End Certification of Street, of City Street Superintendent Form. And whereas the NDOT requires that each certification shall also include a copy of the documentation of the city street superintendent's appointment, i.e. minutes, meeting minutes showing the appointment of the city street superintendent by their name as it appears on their license, their license number, and class of license, and type of appointment, i.e. employed contract, and the beginning date of the appointment. Whereas the NDOT also requires that each Year End Certification of City Street Superintendent Form shall be signed by the mayor or village board chairperson and shall include a copy of resolution of the governing body authorizing the signing of the Year End Certification of City Street Superintendent Form by the mayor or village chairperson. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2025-12?
Before you do, can I suggest perhaps you include the name of the person that is their city street superintendent on the backside?
I was going to ask, is that supposed to be on page three that I don't have?
Uh, no.
Because we only got one and two, not three.
And it's who serves this year. Not who's going to.
That's what I was going to ask. What was on page three?
Page two or three says Parker J. Johnson.
Yep. So number three is just an instruction page, so I don't waste your time with it. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, whose name did you say was?
Parker J. Johnson.
Our city engineer.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, CBL. It's got a license.
Get to the P.
CBL.
Need a motion to adopt that resolution.
A motion to adopt. I'll second.
Resolution 12. 2025-12.
12. Yep. 2025-12.
Okay. Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to adopt resolution 2512. John?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. That takes us to item number seven. Resolution 2025-13. Termination of inter-local agreement with the City of Omaha for the operation of the Kino Satellite Location in Eagle. Can I get a motion to introduce 2025-13?
Motion to introduce 2025-13.
A second. All right. Further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to introduce resolution 2513. Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution number 2025-13. Whereas under the provisions of the Interlocal Cooperation Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 13801, 13827, the Village of Eagle entered into an interlocal agreement to provide for the establishment and operation of one or more Kino Satellite locations in Eagle by the City of Omaha as authorized by resolution 201707 and duly approved on August 21st, 2017. And whereas said agreement was extended for a period of five years beginning May 14th, 2021. And whereas the term of this agreement is scheduled through May 14th, 2026, unless sooner briefed or terminated by mutual agreement of the parties or until terminated by the adoption of a resolution by either governmental subdivision. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Eagle, of the Village of Eagle, Nebraska, does hereby desire to terminate this agreement, said agreement effective May 14th, 2026. Now therefore be it resolved by the Village Board Trustees of the Village of Eagle, Nebraska, that the Village Board Chair and Village Clerk are hereby authorized to execute and deliver this resolution of termination to the City of Omaha after its passage and approval as required by law.
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-13.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to adopt resolution 2513. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Here.
Yep.
All right. That takes us to item number eight. Consider proposals for contracted snow removal services during the 2025-2026 winter season. Is this the same?
Yeah, I asked for this to be put on just in case. I don't know. I think we should still have them on standby. Oh, we got an extra guy this year. I'm hoping they can cover it, but if something happens.
You don't know. Yep.
I think we should have a backup plan.
Could be a lot of stuff, could be more.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Same guys as last year, yep. Or the last couple.
I'm voting to approve them.
I will set.
As a backup.
I will set that to the approval of them as a backup contractor for snow removal. Any further discussion?
Just to kind of a quick reminder that kind of, they did a great job last year. Well, too good a job. I think just a quick reminder to tell them to stop at some point. Not let them go until they're on.
Some of that was my fault, Marcus.
No, I, I know. I just, it's all good. That was all that I just.
I communicate with them, and they call me to ask what they want.
Yep. No, they did a fantastic.
We didn't have, we didn't have, well, some of them were gone sick and stuff, so we just had them, I had them clean it all up.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the proposal for contracted snow removal services during the 25-26 winter season with CC Contract Incorporated. Voting on that. Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Takes aside number nine. Approved at I minutes is tied for the previous meeting.
Think a motion to approve minutes is presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting to approve the minutes. Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Terry?
That takes aside number 10, approved claims.
A few additions in there. We did another batch of deposit refunds for folks that have been here for two, two years plus. It'll take us through the end of the, end of the month, end of November, so we'll cover all those.
Just a quarterly or?
Yeah, we try. Yeah. It doesn't have a good report.
Get to do a.
Out of 129, the CS engineers, that's our first invoice for the NET Waste Management Grant. So that'll be reimbursed by said grant. Got any flags for off-road vehicles? It's on 131. 133 and 134, I see we're starting to see some dollars spent on the F Street construction projects. Any, any other questions? This was some of the highlights, I guess.
Uh, just still water. Is that just your water coolers?
Yeah.
Would you guys be interested in switching to an RO system? Would it be prospective to do an RO rather than water? Having bottled water?
It's just, uh, yeah, just a big cooler.
Yeah, I just, instead of having to deliver water, that just.
I have no idea.
I mean, paper, the system, the filter change out, it's gonna be about the same.
So they don't know much about it, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna do my path water.
Hey, I've got an RO system, I might spend, I don't know, twelve, thirteen hundred bucks on it, but the filter's for almost a hundred bucks.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
And you gotta change them.
Every six months.
Yeah.
I don't know how much water they're going through here, but.
Oh, it'll slow down now, summer. We use quite a bit. When they're outside more, but just one thing less than we have to maintenance.
Alright, I make motion that we approve the claims as.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the claims, Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us to item number eleven, report from attorney Maureen.
Um, we're going through the execution of judgment on the property on Eagle Drive, the derelict property on Eagle Drive, I think it's Eagle Drive. Um, and so that is going for, we've asked the Saunders, or the Cass County Sheriff to foreclose on our judgment lien. Probably won't get set for share of sale until the end of December because they have to publish it for four weeks, so we're in that process right now. I don't believe that they've gotten the confirmation order on the sale of the Yasha property that we purchased, and so I've just emailed the attorney at Baylor Evans and to ask where they are on that, they have to get approval by the court for the sale to get the deed out to us, so. I noticed that he hadn't sent that to me, and he told me he was going to two weeks ago. Um, with regard to our code enforcement, um, that was filed at Cass County Court, I attended court today. Uh, we set trial, um, for two different days for, two of the cases are in one date, and the other two are on another date. Um, and so we've got that coming up, end of December, end of January at least tentatively. Um, I am going to ask Nick to put on the next agenda, um, a dis, an item regarding potential settlement discussions and what the board will authorize and not authorize me to do, we'll probably hold it in closed session because there is pending litigation, so just to kinda give you an update. And then, um, I'll, I'll probably get the triple net lease drafted for the fire department, um, as the addendum to our interlocal that we have approved here in the next couple of weeks, it will be very similar to the triple net lease we have with EFC and the village vehicle on the, the big municipal building right now, um, and then probably going to work on having a letter, uh, drafted for Eagle facilities and grounds to request the USDA to release, uh, the proposed lot two for the Eagle Municipal Edition. Um, and we'll get that off at least to get that process rolling along. Other than that, I think that's, that's pretty much what we've been doing the last month.
Nick, do we have a survey in our hands here?
Yeah.
Which survey?
We have the, we have the subdivision plaque. It just came in.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I have a question, Dan and Nick and I went out on our health tours and we, the, one of the big ones was the one on the highways.
You did a, you did a health board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what is the process for that moving forward?
Well, it depends on what it is, if it's a structural thing, it should go through, the building is both.
There'll probably be a little bit of that, I haven't, I haven't, uh.
So part of it would potentially be a building code violation, a property maintenance code violation, maybe, um, and part of it would be, um.
Most of it's gonna be trash litter cleanup type thing.
Yeah, and, and that, according to our code, I think the village clerk sends out the notice, and we have pictures and we say what there is specifically to clean up, and we start that nuisance process, yeah, cause there's a lot.
He lives out of town, so I don't know.
We have to do certified mail on that, which takes longer.
Yeah, we'll try that first, sometimes they pick up some of the mail, and we'll probably try to get it served with the county's in, so.
Okay.
Could be a little process, but.
Alright, thank you.
I have a point that I wanna ask Maureen, I, I have a few questions as far as, hey, we only have four board members, that obviously means there's a vacancy, but there technically is not a vacancy, to have a vacancy, according to our, your article one-one-oh-four, you have to have a written notice, which we've never received, and the other one is in one-one-oh-five, and if they miss five consecutive more.
More than five.
More than five, which means they gotta miss six, then the board can replace them at that point.
They can declare the vacancy at that point.
I just, I am answering correctly then at that point.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Maureen? Thank you, Maureen. Alright, that takes us to side number twelve, clerk, attorney, Nick?
Uh, the majority of the month has been working on the audit with GVE. So in that, we talked about the administrative, administrative subdivision coming in, and we also have, this week will be the first week of sidewalk improvement district notices will be in the newspaper, and then we'll be sending notices to, uh, the affected property owners. So with that, uh, Terry, give me some.
Well, you know, you have the, the background and some fat sheet, uh, forwarded to the University of Omaha class that is working on a pamphlet or a sales test, ask, but we might accept that we might not get some process, it'll probably take another couple months to put something together, but anyway, I'll get back to him. At a, you know, college, had a student that wanted me to look over, uh, water quality presentation that he was putting together, did math, typed up this information of fire hydrants, so just kinda been one project after another, but, uh.
Been busy.
Our, our big project is one of the spire, we have.
Mine's a queen of.
Mounds, so something to be filed.
Something for a community service project, we could probably help out that one.
That's about it.
I would like to say thank you to Terry for the display in the office for the.
Yes, it looks good.
Have you seen it? Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yes. Very cool.
Otherwise, ending October thirty-first, ninety-one thousand, two fifty-two, ninety-three, total incomes, and your final page is account balances, checking savings, questions for us in the office?
I got one thing, Nick, I, I met with, uh, papers today.
Okay.
And they're gonna be here tomorrow to start with, uh, some.
They're supposed to get ahold of me, I'm with the show, a couple other pieces, did you show them the one on?
I talked with him and he's supposed to come see you first.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Oh, perfect, well, hopefully he calls.
Like it's up to any, like that.
We just called the lady that, who's driving the affected.
Okay, yeah. But I did tell him about that, uh, where we have that, it's kind of sinkhole down there by the co-op area there.
Oh, yeah, and then, um, also we're gonna try to get in shape down that speed bump.
Yep, and I talked to him about that today as well, okay, so he's aware, um, I told him to get with you guys for some updates, but yeah, they're gonna be here tomorrow to start with, uh, some concrete work, I guess.
Yep.
That's what he told me today.
Perfect.
Thank you for calling.
Yep.
Alright, anything else? Alright, meeting adjourned, seven-thirty-seven.
Seven-thirty-seven.